Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the town of Dewey Beach Town Council Public Hearing and Monthly Meeting. Today is Friday, February 21st, 2025. It is 3:00 in the afternoon. It's being held here at the Life-saving Station as well as via Zoom. With that, I would like to convene the Town Commissioners Meeting and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. Next item, throw call. Commissioner Gibbings.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
Commissioner Bauer.
Present remotely.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Here.
And Bill Stevens is here, the mayor, and we also, therefore, we all five are here and available for quorum. First item is, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Next item, can I have approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is to have any public comment for non-agenda items. So is there anybody here that would like to make public comment? Or Kate online? All right, moving on. Let's go to committee reports. Commissioner Gibbings.
The Finance Committee met on Valentine's Day and heard presentations from Brown Advisory and our new representatives, who are Sean Futch, Eddie Bradley, and Rob LeBanc. There was also discussion held about future sources of revenue for the town. Unfortunately, one of the members that made a quorum had to log out before any votes were taken. On the advice of town solicitor, the chair of the committee reached out individually, not in group text but individually, to each member of the committee, asking for their feedback, if any, on the proposed budget. Seven committee members responded. Five expressed no concerns. One outlined areas of future focus, such as insurance and Family Medical Leave Act, and one wanted to focus on future cost increase and had concerns about meeting revenue goals. The responses in their entirety are available as an attachment to today's meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Commissioner Persinger.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Juzinski.
The Infrastructure Committee met. You'll see two items on the agenda, one to fix Jersey Street, we'll talk about that later, and another to do a more detailed design on Van Dyke, both in regard to flooding and outfall.
Great. Commissioner Bauer?
Nothing in addition with Elizabeth explained on the Finance Committee meeting. Marketing Committee, we're still looking for a chair, and if we know anybody, please raise your hand.
No one raised their hand.
I can tell.
Okay. Next on the list, report, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. A-Dell continues to work on the sidewalks in the Center Island. They have been set back because of the weather. We've increased their hours with Del Dot on Fridays until 4:00, and on Saturdays until 4:00. They will not be working on St. Patty's Day, that Saturday, there will be no work, and on that Friday, which is the 14th, they will stop work at 2:00. Senator of the Inland Bays was going to be here this week for the meeting. We've pushed them to March since we had a full agenda. They'll be ready to give us an update on the living shoreline. Agreement for the lifeguard station here, town solicitor had received that, it's back, it was signed off by the state. The property now belongs to the town, and we're just waiting for the historical marker paperwork to come through. Town Attorney and I worked with the Army Corps of Engineer on a real estate paperwork that they expected us to do for the property at the end of Reed Street on the bayside. Part of the Army Corps process for the million dollars to ensure that the property that proposed work's going to be done on doesn't belong to somebody else, it actually is in the right of way of the town, or of Denrec, or Del Dot. So the town solicitor and I filled that paperwork, we got it mailed in, we're waiting for a response from the Army Corps. Working with some partners, the chief and I are, they're called Partners in Public Safety Solutions, it's a nonprofit, they will provide training on NarCam for our town admin folks, the lifeguards, and the police, and they'll also provide NarCam, I guess you would call them NarCam.
The doses.
Doses, for free. They're going to train the town admin on March 11th, and then they'll evaluate how many of the lifeguards need, and the chief's working with them to get NarCam. They'll also be placed in AED boxes, also, so the public has access to them. Bike to the Bay, last year, if you remember, in July, they had some issues over at the Lions Club with some emergency response. We've coordinated with them, and so this year, they're going to actually hold it on June 20th. I told them they need to put in temporary expansion of premises. I've worked with our town attorney. We'll wait and see what their application looks like. It'll go through myself, the chief, and the town building official before it comes before the commissioners. Sunset Park, the application to Denrec is still pending. Denrec's trying to decide whether the park is a wetland or not, and if it is, there's a couple more things we have to do over at Sunset Park. They're evaluating that right now. The Civic League is talking about having a history of Dewey Beach briefing or talk, possibly on 4/26. It may be at the Hyatt, more to come on that. We added additional parking spots on Rodney Street on the bayside. We added 21 additional parking spots there at the end of the street. That's the same street as Town Hall, but down on the bayside. I'd like to thank Jim Deedee's, he's been doing a huge lift for me while I've been tied up with the new Town Hall and Public Safety Building. So thank you, Jim, really appreciate that. Kate, if you could bring up our new parking tag, what it's going to look like this year? It's gonna, it'll look like that. We went with a different company this year, it's going to be the same quality, the same material. We were able to save $1,000 by going with a different company this year. But that's what it's going to look like, of course, the theme, because Dewey Beach is a dog-friendly town. Like to remind everybody, demo on the parking building will take place Monday, the 24th, this Monday, at 8:30. They will start demo on the parking building Monday morning at 8:30. And again, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their support for the new Town Hall and Public Safety Building. Any questions, that's all I have.
I only have one question on what you said concerning the bike to the beach. I had gotten when that they might be trying to change where it's ending, are they still changing at the Lions Club?
So they will no longer be at the Lions Club? What they're proposing right now, and I'm waiting for their application, is they would come down Route 1, southbound, they would turn on McKinley Street, then turn left on Bueno, then turn left on Reed Street, stop at the light, cross when the light is green, they'll have two volunteers there, proceed north to Block Party Hotels, where they will have their finish line.
Okay.
I'm still waiting for their application to come in.
All right, thanks, Bill. Chief.
Stats for January, officer service for 227, criminal arrest 3, DUI arrest 1, traffic citations 56, 162 traffic enforcement hours, one accident, four parking citations. During the last two months, January, February, officers have been working on their FBI supervisory training online, taking their second levels and their first levels for the newer officers. Riley's car that was in the accident like two weeks ago was totaled. We just got.
Not the car that was in town on the accident? Didn't you say there was an accident in town?
Abboton, on his way home.
Okay.
Riley's car, was totaled. So we're working on that, getting the equipment off and all that.
Somebody hit him, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have 13 seasonal backgrounds we're working on. We still have one opening, we're hoping to hire 14, so we're still working on that. Hopefully, we'll get up to that number 14, that would be fantastic. We have been working on some grants. We got approved for a ED grant for about $1,900 for some investigative equipment for our detective, and that equipment's already been purchased. Working on a K-9 training equipment grant for another bite suit and some sleeves through Sleeve, that'll be approved hopefully next month. And then for our B-JAG grant that we're allotted $6,700, we're working on obtaining tablets for that for the seasonal officers to write their citations. We currently use ticket books, which pretty much nobody else in the state does, so we're trying to get away from the ticket books and do those online. That's pretty much it. We've just been working on a lot of things, preparing for the seasonals to start. We're ready for the opening weekend, St. Patty's Day, we have that all lined up, and that's about all I have.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Is Chamber online, Kate, or Carol?
I don't see.
Okay, we'll move over on the Chamber report. The next element of our agenda is to open up the public hearings. I'm going to read through the first three right now. Well, I guess we'll read through all of them, and then if there's any public hearing, we'll take the necessary notes from council, and then we'll move into Section 4 of the agenda item, if that's okay. From an open public hearing, A, public hearing regarding application submitted by Steve Montgomery for the Starbird located at 2009 Highway 1 Dewey Beach Delaware for temporary expansion of premise for the event, Starbird opening weekend, March 14 through 16, 2025. Item B, public hearing regarding application submitted by Steve Montgomery for the Starbird location, Starbird located 2009 Highway 1 Dewey Beach Delaware for temporary expansion of premise for the event, Running of the Bowl, June 28, 2025. Item C, public hearing regarding application submitted by Steve Montgomery for the Starbird located 2009 Highway 1 Dewey Beach Delaware for temporary expansion of the premise for the event, Dewey Goes Pink, October 3 through 4, 2025. Item D, public hearing regarding a resolution to fund a flood mitigation project for Jersey Street as referred by the Infrastructure Committee. E, public hearing regarding a resolution to fund a flood mitigation project for Van Dyke Avenue as referred by the Infrastructure Committee. F, public hearing regarding a draft ordinance to amend 101 Flood Damage Reduction in Chapter 185 Table 3 of the Administrative Code relating to the Freeboard Height Requirements for the elevation of buildings, structures, and equipment as referred by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And finally, item G, public hearing regarding a draft ordinance to amend Chapter 101 regarding the requirements for dry floodproofing of non-residential structures as referred by the Planning and Zoning Commission. What I'll ask, I'll ask for public comment. If you want to make public comment on multiple lines or elements, please indicate which one A through G that you'd be making prior to making those comments. But as the first three have to do with the Starbird, I'd add, Mr. Montgomery here, I don't know if you have any comments you'd like to make prior to public comment.
Steve Montgomery, the Starbird. Coming from the City Rehoboth meeting to this one in the last hour, I just want to say, thank God you guys get paid so well, because their chairs up there are so much more comfortable than what you guys have here. These are the normal three. I just will say, there's one change, and that is, Dewey Goes Pink in October, we learned last year, the Friday night, there's 5,000 people at this event now, and the registration on Friday night, so many people come, that we thought it would be a great idea to extend the extension to Friday evening too, since more people come Friday evening to register than actually Saturday morning. So we have a four-hour period from 5:00 till 9:00 on Friday, requested in addition to the normal 11:00 till 4:00 that Dewey Goes Pink is. All else is the same on the three applications, other than I thought we should probably change the name of the Starbird opening weekend to the mayor's birthday celebration weekend, but we can keep it whatever you want.
I'll go Dylan. Fine keeping it the way it is. Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Anyone here for public comment for any of the items, A through G? Anyone online, Kate? Hold on, on the online side. Please, sir, go ahead.
Bob Palmer with Beacon Engineering for the Jersey Street Drainage Improvement Project. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and staff. Basically, we're here today requesting funding for the infrastructure project on Jersey Street. The parent load bidder is AP Kroll in the amount of $124,750. Mr. Zolper received a CTF grant in the amount of $52,000, and so the amount that we would be requesting is $72,750 from the infrastructure account. And I did have a presentation, but I'm not sure if it's appropriate, if you guys have already seen it. I don't want to belabor the public hearing if it's kind of a foregone conclusion.
Well, when we get to that element of the agenda, we'll go through some of the details for that.
Okay. All right, brilliant.
Great.
Thank you.
If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to public comment, please raise your hand. All right, not seeing any. All right, we're going to, we'll move into Section 4 of the agenda items, having not had other than overview from those that are represented here from the public comment standpoint. So we'll move on to item A, discuss a possible vote on application submitted by Steve Montgomery for the Starbird, located 209 Highway 1 Dewey Beach Delaware for temporary expansion for the Starbird opening weekend, nothing else named there, March 14 through 16, 2025. We already heard from Mr. Montgomery. I'll open up for council if any questions or a motion.
I move that we approve his application for the newly-named Starbird opening weekend and mayor's birthday party.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll kill you. Item B, discuss a possible vote on application by Steve Montgomery for the Starbird located 2009 Highway 1 Dewey Beach Delaware for temporary expansion of premise for the event, Running of the Bowl, June 28, 2025.
I move that we approve the temporary expansion of premises for Running of the Bowl in June 28, 2025.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item C, discuss a possible vote on application submitted by Steve Montgomery for the Starbird located 2009 Highway 1 Dewey Beach Delaware for temporary expansion of premise for the event, Dewey Goes Pink, October 3 through 4, 3rd and 4th, 2025.
I motion that we approve the application for the Dewey Goes Pink event, and appreciate the expansion of time, because it will make things run more smoothly for the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, moving on to number D, discuss a possible vote on resolution to fund a flood mitigation project for Jersey Street as referred by the Infrastructure Committee. Any questions of Beacon Engineering? Yeah, just get comfy.
Okay, brilliant.
All right. Council, any questions for the Town Manager? Do you want to just go basically one more time over the financials?
Yes, so there's been continuing flooding on the first and second block of Jersey Street. If you look at the actual elevation of the street, the lowest parts of the street is the actual center of the first block of Jersey Street, in the center of the second block of Jersey Street. There are no storm drains on either one of those streets, so we've gone through, we've had the soil tested, we've put it out for bid, and as Bob from Beacon Engineering has said, the lowest bed was with Kroll. I did receive a $52,000 CTF grant, that'll bring the total cost right now of the project to approximately $72,000. We do have a second project on Van Dyke, a study.
We'll get to that after this.
Okay.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
How does this project relate to the, or how does the $10,000 capital expenditure that is indicated for Jersey Street storm drains, how does that relate to this project?
Yeah, so, so I wasn't sure in this fiscal year if we were going to be paying the $73,000 or $72,000. I was going to try to get that paid now, just in case that it was broken up. I wanted to have another $10,000 in reserve in fiscal year 2026.
Why is that a capital improvement as opposed to Streets and Infrastructure Account expense?
It should be under, so when we went across in '26, '27, '28, I wanted to also put out what we thought we would spend in infrastructure. So it should be in infrastructure.
Okay, but I don't think, well, we'll get to the capital expenditure budget later. You don't even belabor that.
I was just trying to budget it out for the next three years, all projects.
The approval of this process is a majority in this current fiscal year, ending 3/31/25.
It should all be paid in this fiscal year, but in case it runs over, I had an extra $10,000.
I understand. Okay. Any other questions to council? Not hearing any. Could I have a motion?
I move we approve the infrastructure spending to fix Jersey Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item E, discuss and possibly vote on resolution to fund a flood mitigation project for Van Dyke Avenue as referred by the Infrastructure Committee. Mr. Zolper.
Yeah, so we continually have flooding on Van Dyke Street, on the street itself. We have two cement pipes that run out in the middle of the beach, it's a safety hazard, and then the quality of the water that comes out from the street out into the bay. So we're hoping through this study that JMT will do, we'll be able to address all three of those and figure out how we are going to move the pipes, how are we going to address the water quality coming out of the pipes, and then what size pump maybe need to get the water off of Van Dyke Street.
Any questions for council?
I think it's not.
Yeah, it's, you know, one of the important things that we do in town is to keep everyone safe and keep the infrastructure developed. But just to note that this is a resolution for us to approve of $63,000 expenditure from the Town Infrastructure Account. But the town has presented phased design solution for JMT, and it's, I'm sorry, I should read this out loud. Whereas, the town has been presented with a phased design solution of JMT Environmental Engineering to include site surveys and base delineation, hydraulic analysis, conceptual designs, and public input, concept selection with estimated cost of $100,000. Okay, so the net approval is for $63,000 in addition to what the grant has already been.
Through JMT, we received a grant from Denrec for $37,000. Now, JMT, I've been working with them to try to reduce the overall cost, and they have been able to reduce the overall cost to the project. To, the town would be responsible for $51,000, I believe, instead of the $63,000. So we've been able to cut some costs.
All right, so is your requesting for approval over $63,000 or over $51,000?
It's currently at $51,000 after our cost savings, going back and forth with JMT, see where we could just cut a couple things to save some money.
All right. Any questions of Town Manager? Can I have a motion for the revised resolution at the reduced amount of $51,000?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Item F, discuss possible vote, draft ordinance to amend Chapter 101 Flood Damage Reduction and Chapter 185 Table 3 of the Administrative Code relating to the Freeboard Height Requirements for the elevation of buildings, structure, and equipment as referred to Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Persinger.
I guess unfortunately we have to talk about this a little bit, because we have two versions of the draft ordinance. Without trying to be too basic on this, I guess I want to explain a little bit what we're trying to do here. If your structure is in a flood zone, the height limit is 32 feet of the structure. That's from the bottom floor up to the roof. That's all you can build, 32 feet. But since you're in a flood zone, if you're building a new house, or you're doing a really major renovation on that house, you have to elevate the structure. Until just a few months ago, the elevation, the required elevation was the FEMA designated flood level plus one foot of freeboard. A few months ago, we increased the freeboard requirement to two feet. What we're trying to do with this amendment to Section 101 is to give owners another optional opportunity, and that is if they want to go up another, add another one foot of freeboard, they can, the height of the structure from the first floor to the roof would be 32 feet from that FEMA level plus three feet of freeboard. That's where the measurement of the 32 feet would begin. The problem, the reason we have two versions here, my first attempt at drafting some language to handle this amendment clearly didn't work once the Planning and Zoning Commission started to talk about it. And so there's another version that has developed, which I believe also doesn't work. So I have freeboard, the second version of freeboard, which is something that I drafted in the last few days, which I think intact does work. And let me pull that up.
So this is version two you want us to be looking at?
Yeah, but let me just say, the problem with version one is that, in fact, what it does is it limits owners to only one foot of freeboard, one foot of additional freeboard. There's nothing in our code, as I understand it, that would prevent someone from having three additional feet of freeboard. That's clear now, but the question is, where do you start measuring the 32 feet from? That's measured from the mandatory level of two feet right now. And so, you know, if you're a homeowner and you want to go an additional three feet because you need to park your car under the structure, you're certainly free to do that, but the measurement, the height measurement, you may have to compromise the height of your structure in order to fit under that 32-foot limit. So version, what version two does, and I think I, yeah, what version two does, is indicate first of all that there's a mandatory two feet of freeboard, and then secondly, you can add additional freeboard as an option. So there's no limit there in terms of your option. The limit comes in Table 2, which is our bulk standards table, which is at the end of the draft ordinance, which says that maximum building height, 32 feet measured from the elevation of the 1% annual flood level on the appropriate effective FEMA flood insurance rate now, plus town mandatory and up to one foot of optional freeboard. So that limits the height determination of the structure. Caps it at three feet, that's where you would begin. Again, you can add additional freeboard based on the language in Section 101, but again, this, the opportunity here is for owners to be able to optionally add an additional foot and get an increase in their, to be able to build a little bit higher if they choose to do so.
But not changing the overall structure is higher.
Does not change the overall, the height of the overall structure, that's right.
So, can we ask questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so I get what you're trying to do, and when I read Option 2, my concern is always, you know, anything that's ambiguous goes to the more generous standard when you kind of have something. And my concern was in the non-bulk standards table, where it said you could add whatever freeboard you wanted to, and it references the 32-foot envelope. My concern is, let's say someone decided that they wanted to add 10 feet of freeboard over base flood elevation, because they wanted their top story to look over all their neighbors towards the bay or the ocean, or whatever the case is. I'm wondering if our code would really be clear enough to prevent them from doing that? Because I don't think your intent was to allow people to do that.
Yeah, it's not.
You can have 10 feet of freeboard, but you're still limited by the 32-foot height extension, or 32-foot height limit.
Which, which.
And that's in the bulk standards here. So the measurement can be no higher, the measurement at which, or the point at which that 32-foot measurement begins can be no higher than the FEMA flood insurance level plus town mandatory freeboard, which is two feet now, plus up to one foot of optional freeboard.
So people are, people are always free to elevate their building more than the minimum standard, okay? They're always allowed to have their lowest finished floor, is kind of the flood term that people use in a AE zone. They're always allowed, if it's, you know, base flood elevation plus one, two, or three, whatever the standard is, they can, they can add that to four or five, and you don't need anything in the code to let them do that, and on their individual premium, they actually get a reduction in their rate for doing that. And then they don't get any extra of that 32 feet, because the 32 feet starts from BFE, in this case, plus two, or plus two plus one with version one of the document. With the second version of the document, my concern is that 32-foot envelope could be measured if people say they're BFE plus 10. I'm not, I'm not sure that it's really clear that that doesn't happen.
It can't, because of what's in the bulk standards table. There's no reference to the 32-feet envelope, building envelope, in Section 101, and that's in some sense deliberate. Again, the 32 feet has, can be measured no higher than the FEMA flood insurance rate level plus town mandatory freeboard, which is two feet, plus up to one foot of optional freeboard. Anything, any additional freeboard above that, if you want to do that, you would have to compromise on the 32-feet height limit.
So I guess what I'm wondering is why, why even mention it when people don't need anything in the zoning code to do that?
We're limiting your, the height of your building. That's why it's in the bulk standards.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the.
So I have a section 101?
I'm talking about, just in the document, like line, line 52 and 53, where you have the sentence, you repeat it in a few places, but where you say additional freeboard may be added as an option, subject to the town's height restriction.
Right.
I'm wondering why we even have that sentence in there.
So I think it's because there's an effort to just draw a distinction between mandatory freeboard, which is a term that wasn't used in the narrative or in the text anywhere until now. It was in the.
It's in the bulk standards.
In the table, and optional freeboard. So we're kind of introducing a new concept, at least in the text, that we've got mandatory freeboard, and now we have optional. at least in the text, that we've got mandatory freeboard, and, and now we have optional freeboard. And the optional freeboard allows you to go one foot, essentially, it allows you to increase your 32 feet by one additional foot. If you're using, if you're using three feet of freeboard, you get an additional foot. Whereas, without this language, you wouldn't get an additional foot at, at your roof peak because you don't get an additional foot unless you're, you're using three feet of freeboard.
Correct.
The, the, the issue I think is if you don't say something about optional freeboard.
Right.
It makes it more difficult for people to realize that there's an opportunity there, and they can take advantage of it.
Right, I get it, yeah.
The way that, I'm sorry?
I get it, I get, I get.
Oh, okay.
Trying to point that you're trying to make sure people understand that they can have an additional foot of building height by going up one additional foot. My concern is that, is it going to be crystal clear in the language that that 32-foot building envelope maxes out at BFE plus three, not BFE plus four or five?
It's clear to me, but I wrote it, so I might be the best person to make a judgment on that.
I thought that it was clear in the table.
And the table's.
That's after line 82, that table. I thought it was clear there. I was confused until I got to the table. And I'm like, okay. Because I had the same concern that you did, Commissioner Juzinski, that they were going to build it high enough so they could see over everybody.
Right.
That's why the phrase "subject to the town's building height restriction" is, it calls attention to that.
And, and the language "and up to" is meant to be a maximum additional one foot.
Okay. And there's, and Fred, just to be clear, there's, that is the only place where building height is in the zoning code. We don't have it somewhere else where someone's gonna try to drive to another definition, right, for building height. Is that, is that the case?
Well, it's definitely, there, there's no other reference to it in the flood mitigation chapter, for sure. So we're not messing, we're not creating a problem there because we're not, we're not addressing it in 101.
Okay.
And David, just one, one thing to include, we'll put an asterisk next to this so that when we go through our, as we are going through our charter review right now for cleaning up, to make sure that there's nothing that's going to be, it's not going to have an alternative, a different outcome than what we intended.
Yeah, I mean, that's my main, my main concern is, you know, kind of what Elizabeth was, was talking about as well. But if you guys think it's clear, I'll, I'll go with it, you know?
So where it says "and up to," would you feel better about it if it said "and not more than one foot of optional?"
He's pointing to the table.
Yeah, that, either language is fine with me, but if you think it should say "not more than," then if that's clear to you, that's fine with me.
I don't, I'm not requiring the change. I'm just saying it's a, it's a question of how comfortable you are with it. Does that make you more or less comfortable?
No, I'm very comfortable with what's in the table. That, that to me is crystal clear. What's in, what's in table on, after line 82. The part that wasn't clear to me was all the stuff before when it just talked about adding the additional freeboard, right? You know, that, that's where I wasn't clear on it. But if that doesn't really have anything to do with the height limit, then, okay, yeah.
All right, that being said, Commissioner Bauer, any comments?
No comments on it. It's clear to me.
All right, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And could I ask that we never have to talk about freeboard for a long time?
Something I knew nothing about not too long ago. Yes.
Item G, discuss possibly voted draft ordinance to amend Chapter 101 regarding the requirement for dry floodproofing of non-residential structures as referred by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Persinger.
This is really a cleanup. We forgot to change this particular section of the code when we increased the freeboard from, the mandatory freeboard from one foot to two foot, two feet. And so this, this cleans that up, makes that clear. There's no reason to add any additional optional thing there because you can dry, dry floodproof your building as much, as high as you want. Just depends on how ugly you want to make it. So again, it's a cleanup amendment.
Got it. Any questions for Commissioner Persinger?
Nope.
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item H, review and discuss January financial report. Ms. Hall.
Okay, Commissioners. The transfer tax continues to increase. As long as a piece of property valued at $10,000 sells between February and March this year, $1 million in transfer tax will be brought in in revenue this year. With the possible development of other properties, those properties will continue to, transfer tax, will continue to contribute to transfer tax, helping us for the next couple of years. But eventually, this bubble will burst. We have to keep that in mind. The front office is doing an amazing job continuing to follow up on those homeowners who advertise their homes for rent but do not obtain a rental license or file accommodations tax. And their effort has gone a long way to help our bottom line. Our maintenance department also has been wonderful in helping things. They have been doing, instead of driving different pieces of equipment to Salisbury, which we've done for years for maintenance, they're doing the work themselves. So saving us money and quicker turnaround. Everyone knows the efforts of our police department to get grants. Just let me explain that over the years that I've been here, almost eight years, in the first year that the chief and her administrative assistant, Ms. Kramer, have been here, they got more grants than in all the years, the first six years I was here. So there, it's, it's a night and day difference in the number of grants, based just in the number of grants and the dollar value of grants they have, they've gotten in. I applaud them on their efforts. They have done outstanding work to help the department and the town improve, both safety-wise and dollar-wise. Town Hall has also brought in grants totaling $2.2 million for various projects around town this year. There has been some concern over the town's participation in the Delaware Paid Family Medical Leave Act. We are legally required to participate. Contributions were required to start January 1st of this year. However, we were able to get a third-party broker, Arch Insurance, so we don't have to start contributions till next year, January 1st. Delaware market rate is 0.8% of the wages up to the federal, up to the FICA wage cap, which is set at $176,100. With us going with a third-party broker, our rate is 0.46%. This will save about $8,000 in contributions that have to be paid starting in January. In the December budget amendment, the amount of contributions for the last quarter of the fiscal year will be taken into account and will be included in the FY '27 budget.
Wonderful. Any, any questions for Ms. Hall? Not seeing any. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Can we excuse both Beacon and JMT from the, from our projects where there will be any more questions, correct?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good weekend.
Oh, do you have a question for us? Just give us one minute.
Mr. Mayor, as soon as we can get this stuff material ordered with Kroll, as soon as we can get this project done, and we won't have folks complaining as we go through April.
Did you sign one?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Thanks, Bob. All right, on to item I. Discuss possibly voted ordinance to amend Chapter 1 and to add a Chapter 120 to define standard and cluster style mailbox assemblies and adopt specifications for placement and installation of mailbox assemblies. Mr. Zolper?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've shown the Commissioners in the public in the past how we have a number of different mailboxes around town that are set in the middle of people's property lots to, in my opinion, to keep folks from parking in the public right of way. With this, with this ordinance, I hope to address that. And it gives the, the property owner a generous amount of time to, to fix the mailboxes and to have them moved. The town will first go up and speak with the property owner. We will send a notification to them. We will work with the, the property owner and explain why we want the mailboxes moved to the approximate three feet away from the edge of their driveway. I've also spoke with the postmaster who oversees this area. As she advised, that she would also like to see these mailboxes in a uniform, in a uniform way around town instead of just some here and there. And as many cluster boxes as we can get throughout the town. The town would support that, and we'll go out and help the folks and show them where they can actually put the cluster boxes up around town. And again, the postmaster also said that she would love to see more cluster boxes around town.
Make the job easier.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone here for public comment on that? All right, any question for Mr. Zolper?
I just had potentially one change. On point three on the second page at the top, there was an earlier draft of this that instead of what's, what's indicated here about no raised curb, we, there was something about put the house, house or apartment number on the mailbox. I think that is part of the USPS guidelines. And I think that the point three that's currently there kind of in some sense conflicts with, with point D, which is on, says on streets without a raised curb, that mailbox shall be positioned eight to 12 inches from the edge of the street pavement. What's in point D is part of the state administrative code. And I, I think it's fine to go with that unless others disagree. Just, I would delete point three.
So you delete three and keep D?
And I would, I would substitute, put the house or apartment number on the mailbox instead of point three.
I'm fine with that. Any, any issues or comments on that? I'm fine with that change here.
And then the only other thing we should deal with is at the end, the violations and penalties, and the ability potentially of the town manager or perhaps the building official to grant a waiver in certain situations, as well as, as an effective date for this ordinance and any, this, the proposed effective date here is immediate for any newer replacement mailboxes. But I think the intent here is to give people with existing mailboxes that don't conform some period of time within which they could come into compliance.
I'd like it to be at least 90 days.
What about the first comment on the violations and penalties? As an insertion, we have that consider withholding permits, consider authorizing town manager to grant waivers from town requirements in, for incidents owing unique characteristic of adjacent property, strict compliance presents exceptional practical difficulties.
So I think having the town manager being able to grant waivers would take care of ADA issues that have been raised in other comments.
Fair.
Should it be the town manager or should it be the building official? Would be my question.
Well, can the, can the town manager delegate to the building official based on our organizational chart?
Probably yes.
I'm, I'm fine with either one.
Yeah.
Commissioner Juzinski?
I think it should be the building official. That's, that's kind of the person who makes these type of determinations.
You have fun.
I don't have a problem with that.
Sure.
Okay.
Good suggestion.
I, I don't think there's a need to consider withholding of permits because the town has the option of just removing the mailbox and replacing it if necessary. So the town can solve the problem.
Okay. All right, fair. And what about the compliance on or before? Is 90 days good enough, or do you want to put a set date in place?
Do you want it before the season starts?
I, I think it should be from the time they're noticed. It should be 90 days.
Okay.
All right.
So not from 90 days from when this is enacted, but 90 days from notice?
If somebody's traveling and we can't get, I, I want to give them a fair amount. Once I talk to them or they get a certified letter from us saying you have 90 days and we can prove that they got the letter, I think that gives them plenty of time.
And after the 90-day period, it would be removed at?
It, it can be removed.
Okay.
Unless they can contact the building official with the special needs.
Yeah.
So it's 90 days from the date of written notice?
And then no longer withholding permits.
Right. And I'm looking at that language, the word adjacent properties is in there. I don't know why, I think I drafted this language. I did. I don't know now why I refer just to adjacent properties. It should be just unique characteristics of subject properties.
And owners, because I do want the ADA thing to be in there. And I read it there when it's not there. I hallucinated it being present.
So change it to instances owing to unique characters, characteristics of the property? Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
With strict compliance, not the exceptional practical difficulties for the owner. Including but not limited to ADA. Is that all right?
Is that okay?
So I think even in the absence of the ADA language in this, that the ADA would allow. Part of the uniqueness. Well, I, I think ADA is federal law, and it would, it would trump any limitation we would have not to grant it. So I don't know that we have to mention it. All right, do you want to read back one more time so that we can ask for a motion on the changes to this? So, we're, we're going to strike the reference to the withholding of permits and say, the building official, is it the building official? Is that the language we use here? Yes. The building official is authorized to grant waivers from town requirements in instances owing to unique characteristics of, I think, just properties. Strict compliance presents exceptional practical difficulties for the owner. I don't know how to phrase. Well, owing to the unique characteristics of the property or properties. So it's written in the plural, grant waivers from, we've got grant waivers plural, owing to the characteristics of properties.
You can go singular and still word characteristics.
Consider authorizing the building official to grant a waiver in town requirements. Okay. In instances owing to unique characteristics of a property, strict compliance presents exceptional practical difficulties for the owner, where?
Put where in there. Between properties and strict, but where.
Gotcha. Yep, thank you.
Yes.
Where strict compliance presents exceptional practical difficulties for the owner. All right, before I ask for a vote, is there anyone that would like to make a comment in the, on the Zoom? If so, please raise your hand so that Kate can identify you.
Yes, do you have a comment?
Okay, let them in. Is, is someone here to make comment? I'm not hearing anybody.
Hello?
There we go.
Yeah, David Moskowitz, Dewey Beach. Just a quick question aside from my email. What appeal process is it if you don't agree with the building official or town manager? In the past, you were talking about having an appeal to the Board of Adjustments. So there should be some process in place, which I believe it may be in the town, but it would be nice if you put it in this. If someone doesn't agree with the building official, they can go to the town manager, and if they don't agree with the town manager, they could go to the Board of Adjustments.
So the jurisdiction of the.
Thing is, is that people's mailboxes fly away?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, if there's a storm and the mailboxes all fly away.
Uh, Mr. Moskowitz, we're having trouble hearing you.
Hello?
Hello?
We're getting every other word. I'm, I heard flood.
I heard fly.
You heard fly, I heard flood. Okay.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, just a quick question. If, if, the ordinance talks about replacements. So if there's some storm and everyone's mailboxes or a bunch of mailboxes go away, does that mean people have to file for permits to put their mailbox back or possibly replace it with the same mailbox? So that was just unclear from the ordinance as well. Thank you.
You don't need comments to put a mailbox there.
So if they were going to put a perm, a mailbox in and use.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you.
So that was just unclear from the ordinance as well. Thank you.
You don't need comments to put a mailbox there.
So if they were going to put a perm, a mailbox in and use?
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you.
Use cement, permanently put it in. Could I ask Jim, Jim Deedee's? If he's there or not, but?
I see his name.
He's, he's up there. Jim, you're on mute. I know you're probably trying to talk.
I am trying to talk.
Yes. Jim, currently if they're putting a mailbox in and they're using Quick Read or cement to put the footer in for it, do they require a permit?
If it's in the flood zone, they're going to require a permit. Makes no difference. Or in the, in the, if you're in an X zone, no.
Would you be opposed if, you know, because this is a change, if we waived the permitting fees associated with compliance?
I mean, if there was a major storm, that wouldn't be an issue.
All right.
Does that need to go in here and make someplace else?
The draft ordinance says a building permit must be obtained from the town before a new mailbox assembly is installed within town right of way.
I'm sorry, we get the permit, but it's, I was just making comment about waiving the fee if we require them to move because of this.
Okay. I thought there was some comment that the permit would not be required.
No, he's saying the permit would be required because?
Permit fee wouldn't be required.
I'm saying the permit fee would be required. Okay. Any other comments at council before I ask for a revised motion based upon what Fred has scribbled on his paper?
Do we need to do something about appeal process or is that covered elsewhere in the charter and or code?
I think it's covered elsewhere and it's not crystal clear. The board of adjustments jurisdiction is clearly to handle appeals from interpretations of the zoning code. That's clear. This is not the zoning code. This is going in someplace else. But I, I think that the state, the jurisdiction in the state code for boards of adjustment generally is broader than that and that people who, who feel they've been adversely impacted by a decision of an official in town generally can go to the board of adjustment without respect to whether it's the building code. Now, there may be some other exceptions. I, I meant the zoning code. So I don't know that you need to, to include that. But if we envision going to the board of adjustment over these things, which, which is, then why should we, should we consider? I mean, I, I think the first layer should be to the building official and not to the board of adjustment because we're just talking about mailboxes here. We're not talking about permanent expensive costly structures.
Any, any harp on having an appeal to the town manager? If, if there is a disagreement?
I have no issue with that.
So why, it just gives another layer of protection.
Excuse me. Would that be a decision made by the building official?
If the, if the homeowner comes back and disagrees or do not agree with what the building official has determined, then they have the right to seek, to go to the town manager for a possible change to that decision.
So let me, let me give you guys my perspective on this. The reason I suggested the building official being the point was specifically so that if there's some conflict because someone has an expensive cluster and they're frustrated with it, they, they would have a right of appeal to the board of adjustment because they can obviously reroll on anything a building official does. When you, when the rubber meets the road though, when people go to the building official and they're having trouble with the building official agreeing with them, the town manager ends up getting in the loop anyway. So I don't know that we necessarily want to kind of have that as an intermediary. I mean, the town manager, if somebody's giving the building official disagreeing with them, the town manager is going to be in the loop anyway. So if they can't come to agreement at that level, then they just take it to the board of adjustment, which is elsewhere in the code. That's kind of my view.
Okay. The only question in my mind is whether we add language saying appeals from an adverse decision of the building inspector may be taken to the board of adjustment.
We can add that line in.
Yeah. No harm in that.
Yep.
All right. So based upon those few changes that we have, could I have a motion?
I would like to propose that we adopt the ordinance to amend chapter one dash one, dash one six regarding mailboxes with the amendments just discussed by council.
Oh, the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Item J, discuss positive vote in ordinance to amend chapter one dash 13 to revise fees for parking tickets, timeframes for fee accrual and late amounts for unpaid parking tickets. This was part of our discussion as it related to our overall budget process in terms of increasing the fees. Any questions from council on that or any question from the public? Any questions from Council? Walt, Kate's looking. Not hearing any. Could I have a motion as drafted?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Item K, discuss positive vote to approve fiscal year 2026 operating and capital expenditure budget. Town manager, Ms. Hall, do you have any opening statements that you'd like to make?
So I would say Ms. Hall's worked very hard. This past year, we've had quarterly meetings with the department heads, for example, with the chief to try to say, hey, this is where you're spending money. This is where you're under burning. This is where you're over burning in certain areas. Also with the lifeguard captain during the summer, our maintenance team. We've been, been doing this. And as we look at the, when we have these quarterly meetings in how much money they're spending, that helps us develop the following year's budget. And Ms. Hall's done a very good job in the four years that I've been here on always moving closer to a better prepared budget and looking at what we've done, not only in this past year, but in the previous two years to try to figure out what we're going to need in, for example, in 2026. It's tough for the town of Dewey Beach to keep up with Bethany, Lewis, and Rehoboth when it comes to salaries. We're doing the best we can. And in the 2026 budget, we have those proposals. We're not even with them when it comes to salaries, but we're as close as we can afford to be at this time. Ms. Hall?
I, I think we, we've done a good job with meeting the needs of the town with adjusting the financial, with, meeting the needs of the town with the limited revenue streams that we have, the, with the grants that the departments are getting and with the option to have the budget amendment in December gives us the opportunity to look at where we are and make amendments. I hope the commissioners will take this and approve it.
Anyone here for public comment before we open conversation commissioners? Anybody online? Please raise your hand. All right. Open up for council for any comments, questions. Commissioner Pressinger.
Yeah. I know there was some concern expressed by one of the finance committee members about hitting the revenue targets and that's, you know, every year I've been through this budget process, that's always a concern. It's always something we worry about. And I think as Sheena told us earlier today, the transfer tax is coming in at something over a million dollars for this year. We put in $700,000 for this year. Is that the right number? I don't, you know, it's no one's, no one has a crystal ball to answer that question definitively. So I, and I think in some sense, that's kind of why we have a rainy day fund. If, if we miss these targets significantly in some way or another, then, you know, we do have some reserve funds to fall back on too. One other thing I've mentioned with respect to revenue, we haven't, we don't have an ordinance yet that we have approved to increase the hourly parking fees. They, they are part of the operational budget, increasing from $3.50 to $4 an hour. Is that correct? So we will have to do that.
Next meeting if this gets approved.
The other thing that I want to mention, the staffing plan is part of the budget and that's a required part of the budget. It has been supplied. What's a little different about it for me, I think, and I looked back last year and I didn't see quite the same thing, but have we in the past broken out the overtime expenses from the regular salaries?
No, sir, we have not.
Then I, you know, what's quite striking and, you know, not necessarily a negative comment, but it is very striking when you look at the police budget. The, the salaries increased by just over 25% because of overtime for police officers. And they're up almost, they increased almost 20% because of overtime for the administrative police staff. So I, I would like to hear a bit from the, the police chief in terms of what, what's the reason for that? Is that different than in the past? Is there something that, you know, has been changed that is, is causing this? Or maybe this is just what we've had all along and we just didn't realize it because we haven't broken it down.
And if I could have a secondary question before you answer that, because we can put them both together. The budget as part of the staffing plan, I assume is based upon historical overtime usage, because I also lived at that. And will that possibly be changed with the full staff that we're going to have going into this year?
Okay. Okay. So I'm not really sure about when you said in the past how it's been budgeted out as far as the overtime. Overtime is, happens when we have obviously people on leave, people out sick. When I first got here, we had eight officers. So we didn't even, we were supposed to have 10. So obviously people had to fill in and cover those gaps. So that was a lot of overtime my first year here. And in the second year, we still haven't been up to our 13 number. We always add additional officers in the summer. Summer is our highest expense, obviously from starting in, it really starts in March when we have St. Patty's weekend, all the way till probably September to the beginning of October where we have to have extra staffing. And a lot of that is done on overtime. I do know that Sheena does budget that for special duty and things like that. Some of our positions were working at, off duty at Starboard and North Beach. So that also, that didn't come out of our coffers. That came out of their coffers, but that also gave us extra staffing on the street. We're doing our best to do schedule adjustments for officers when we have to do training and other duty assignments to save money in overtime. And same thing with dispatch. Obviously they work 12 hour shifts. If we have a dispatcher out injured, we have some that are in the military, so we have to cover their shifts. So that also incurs overtime. But we are doing our best to monitor that and modify that as best as we can.
May I also give a little bit of insight that the chief doesn't, that, that'll help out. The numbers that are included do include the races and the coverage at Starboard or whatever. We have to include that in the calculations because they have to be included for workers' comp and taxes and everything. They do get offset by the numbers that are included in police extra duty up in a higher up line. So they do offset, but we have to include them because they get included in our workers' comp numbers and our taxes. So we have to include them for those numbers. Also, when the police contract was initiated, the way overtime was calculated for our officers changed. Under, for, normally when you take time off, if I were to take, or Ms. Horn here, if she were to take time off, if she does not work 40 hours in a week, she takes a day off, she does not get overtime if she does not work 40 hours in a week. You have to physically work 40 hours. With the police contract, the time that they take off counts towards their overtime. So even though it's, it's counted on an 80 hour pay period, if they take, they work a 12 hour shift, if they take a day off, that counts towards their 80 hours. So if they work 72 hours and have a 12 hour shift off, giving them 84 hours, they have four hours of overtime. That was negotiated in the contract. That is standard police contract. I researched that before the contract negotiations. So that's not anything that's unusual. So that changes the whole overtime situation. So those things were very different from the past, which throws all the overtime off from the way it was done before. So that's why it is very different. This is not, these are things that are outside the chief's, the way we have to account for or outside the chief's control.
So for clarification, if I'm looking down the overtime column for the police, some of those hours the town is not paying for because they're special duty being paid by other people, but we have to have it for the other columns?
Special duty, one is re.
Reimbursed?
That's the word. Yes.
Okay. That helps, but we don't know how much of this is that. Because I think with the mayor, if I may put words in the mouth, I think what he was asking is now that we are at a full complement, are we projecting that we're going to need to need, need to have as much overtime? Well, as I said, we're doing our best to reduce overtime. I can't guarantee it's going to be reduced if someone gets hurt or something or gets out sick or?
But these numbers are based upon historical overtime usage. I assume.
Yes. Yes. This is a worst case scenario.
This is when in prior years when we've had, we were down one, up to down. And last year we had two in the academy for most hard beer.
Yes, sir.
It's historical, except for that change in the police contract. That's?
Correct.
Correct.
A pretty generous benefit that no one else gets the benefit of. And I would just note in the, in the draft operating budget, the police extra duty offsets only $15,000 projected.
Correct, because we do not have a signed agreement with Starboard or any other organization for coverage with them. So we're not projecting that we will be doing any coverage with them. We're just projecting the coverage for the races.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, there, this is based upon what we've had in history. Obviously, you know, we're, we're not, we're not an organization that pads our, our budget to try to, you know, give more money or to give people overtime when they don't deserve it. I like being conservative in the sense of having worst case scenario. I think this is worst case scenario. Again, I don't, I know the chief is not going to give overtime away. It's not in her, in her DNA. But, you know, just to give an example, I just did quick math on two of the positions, one being a patrolman at $13,000 versus their $63,000 salary. That equates to a 14% of quick math works on overtime that they're working or roughly six hours extra per week. Now, that seems relatively normal in terms of the amount of time. I think the real anomaly is when we see figures of $36,000 or $27,000 on a $79,000 base. In those particular situations, we're looking at a 30% increase or basically 12 hours per week overtime, assuming it's all time and half, while some of it might be double time. So.
Is there any effect of what you changed to the 12 hour shift? Is there any effect on overtime because of that?
Yes. They weren't on that before I got here. So we needed to go to 12 to cover 365, 24 hour day coverage. So they automatically get, it's four hours per pay period of overtime because they're working the hours. So they are getting automatic, that's part of their work schedule. So that, if you add that up, that's nothing we can do about that to provide the coverage.
Commissioner Pressinger, so we wanted two officers per shift also, whereas in the past, when I first got here, sometimes there's only one officer working by themselves from four in the morning until the next car came in at eight. This way, we have two officers on all the time. And the other thing is every two weeks, I look over payroll, not only for the police, but for my maintenance folks, for my admin folks, for everybody. And the chief and I have had conversations about overtime. So I go through every single person and I look at them and the chief knows when she comes over to the office, I say, hey, the overtime this week looked really good. And then there's times the chief comes over and I say, wow, we had a lot of overtime this week. And she'll say, well, we had this going on or we had that going on. So I, I do look at it and I do have a conversation with the chief when, when it's good and when we've looked like we've earned a lot of overtime.
I will ask, well, any other questions from council on the budget, operating budget? Not hearing any. Ms. Hall, would it be too big of an ask is as we prepare for the 2026, as we prepare for the 2026 season, to break out overtime and base compensation as a line item within the financial statements so that we could easily see those variances? Is that it?
I, I'm thinking. I'm thinking.
I know. It, it, I think it'd be, it'd make us, I think. I think it'd be, it'd make us, I think the transparency of what the overtime, if we can just have that additional line item on the detailed budget.
I can do it.
Okay. I appreciate it. Any other questions for Ms. Hall or any, anything from council? With that being said, is there, well, this is just the operating?
Do we want to look at capital?
We talked about capital expenditures, right?
Yeah, let's look at the capital expenditures, expenditures next.
Hey, wait, I think we have a comment online.
I can't see that far.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Kate?
He's in. He can speak.
You can, whoever's online, you can speak if you wish to make a comment.
Yeah, David Moskowitz, Dewey Beach. If you look at the code of 93-4, which special events, because that was mentioned, it says the town manager shall annually determine the hourly rate per man-hour of police assistance, and said rate shall be approved by the commissioners at a regularly scheduled meeting. If no change of the rate is proposed by the town manager, the rate shall be, remain the same. I don't remember that rate coming up, and it would be very interesting to know what that rate would be, and if that rate includes like the benefits and pension costs and the overtime, since there's a new police contract, it should really reflect that higher rate. So you should look at 93 and 4 and make sure if you're having an event, the right rate is being charged. It probably should be higher than what it is, my assumption is. The second thing is benefits is something to look at, very important, because you have one employee, for example, who makes around $65,000, and they have $25,000 in benefits, which is reasonable, and then the other employee is $49,000 salary and $50,000 in benefits. And way back when Dale Cook was mayor and the previous town manager, there was some sort of policy where new employees, 10% individual, 20% family went to the town. At the last meeting, it was said, oh, this would disrupt things, but that wouldn't stop you from immediately seeing any new employees hired from today on. Instantly, 10% individual, 20% family gets taken out, so you're not disrupting anyone's health insurance who's already an employee as of now, but you're, going forward, at least you're changing that, and that would apply for non-police employees. It would just start the road towards getting back to where it was in 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Moskowitz. As a, you know, as a secondary comment concerning that, you know, we do have, I know we don't not, don't normally respond to public comment, but for, just for the general public to know, we do have a collective bargaining agreement with the police department. That police department, within the police department, we are not allowed, at this current contract, to substantially change the structure of the benefits. That will be something that we talked with them when we go back through the collective bargaining agreement in two years. The definition, and I have spoken to the representative to FY at the police department to, for their understanding of substantially the same. That does not prevent us from moving carriers. It doesn't move, prevent us from moving away from the state to a more competitive platform for the benefits, and it does not prevent us from potentially changing the structure, whoever may be familiar with employee benefits, whether it's a PPO or an HSA or an HERS, that's not the issue. It's, the issue is the out-of-pocket costs associated with their overall plan. And we do intend to look at that in the upcoming year, and if there is a substantial savings, we will make that change and actually have it as part of the amendment. But at this point in time, this has been prepared without any employee deductions to their payroll for it, to be, one, to be, also to be compliant with that collective bargaining agreement, but on the second level of that is that it's a good way to continue recruiting and not hurting the new employees coming in and keeping everybody on the same platform. Any other comments on the operating budget? All right. Let's jump into the capital budget expenditure. I assume all the commissioners have reviewed what's been put there? Commissioner Pressinger.
You can ignore my earlier comment. I don't think I had my head quite on the right way when I asked that first question because I see what you've done, it's fine.
Says infrastructure off to the side.
Yeah, it does, and I was, I was not thinking correctly there. I don't see anything unreasonable in the capital expenditure budget. My only issue with this, and I sent this to the town manager and to Sheena in an email, a series of emails, is that it's not, it's not fully funded. You know, we're still short $30,428 for FY '26, so I would propose that we, if we're going to approve this as a document, I would propose that as part of our motion, we include something that says that the approval and assumes that the fiscal year '25 surplus will be sufficient to meet all obligations and projected capital expenditures for FY ' '26, and that a revised capital expenditure budget will be provided if surplus funds are not sufficient.
I'm good with that.
Yes.
But to know that if we're, hey, this is approval for just the FY '2026 capital expenditures, not '26, '27, '28, correct?
That would be a part of it as well, yeah.
Yeah, as long as that's good. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, council? Not hearing any. Have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 operating and capital expense budget.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, I want to make sure that we have as part of our formal motion.
With what he said.
So I'd like to modify that to say that approval of the capital expenditure budget is tentative and assumes that fiscal year '25 surplus will be sufficient to meet all obligations and projected capital expenditures for FY '26, and that a revised capital expenditure budget will be provided if surplus funds are not sufficient. Further, the capital expenditures for '27 and '28 are projected expenditures only and may be funded at the end of 2026 and the end of 2027.
Agreed.
I'll amend the motion to accept that, Gary. That's a good suggestion.
Quotas inferred. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right. That concludes the marathon. It actually wasn't a marathon. That will move to closing of the meeting. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Givings?
I want to congratulate town manager and councilor on working together to transfer this life-saving station to the town. I think we'll be a very good steward of it going forward because we have a vested interest in it staying in good shape. I remain in awe of the chief's efforts to get grants, and I'm very impressed with the town administration also doing those with a town that has no steady property tax or other predictable income. It is very nice that we're able to find the pots of gold where we need to find the pots of gold. And Sheena, I have to say, I am astonished with your working and reworking of the budget and your presentation tonight was stellar. Thank you.
Commissioner Pressinger.
No comments.
Commissioner Juzinski.
No comments.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yeah, last but not least here, the, I want to thank the Finance Committee, especially Iris Curtis, for this being her first budget go-around. And Iris, she did an excellent job and the entire team did as well. They brought up some things that, they were good suggestions that I think will work, you know, get a little head start next year on next year's budget, you know, with some of these things that the committee wanted to see. So thank you very much, everybody, for their help, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Paul. Commissioner Bauer. All right. Finally, my own, my own comments. I, too, am also surprised with, you know, that we continue to beat the transfer tax projections. One thing mentally to note is that, you know, right now, to hit our $700,000, it's roughly hitting $47 million in property being transferred. The current state of our, of our town is that the property values exceed $1 million, so we're looking at, you know, from a transfer of roughly 47 homes a year, would actually allow us to meet that. Now, compare that to where we're five years ago or six years ago, when it was half a million-dollar homes, you know, it would be twice that amount. So we're continuing, as price of how homes go up, being able to achieve that because of the value of the homes here in Dewey Beach, which is just unbelievable. That's all I have to say, and also, great job on budget, and every year it gets a little, it gets more professional, a little easier to get through. Moving on, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.